All right, one block.
Okay.
You ready?
No.
All right. This is the Holiday Island City Planning Commission meeting for February 8th, 2022. Calling the meeting to order. Let's start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Commissioner Owood.
Here.
Commissioner Graves.
Here.
Commissioner Mills.
Here.
Vice Chair Pittman.
Here.
Chairman Keys.
Here.
Secretary Dumas here, all present.
I declare a quorum. Meeting minutes from January 25th. Any discussion on the meeting minutes?
And you approve the agenda?
Yeah. I'll send you detailed minutes.
As always.
We'll approve the agenda first.
You gotta approve the agenda.
Okay.
I take a motion to approve the agenda.
Can move to approve the agenda. I second it. Any discussion? Home in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda's approved. Now the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of January 25th.
Did you do that?
Been to approve.
Then they made a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Jury's seconded it. Any discussion? Home in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes are approved. No reports. I'm going down to old business then. Continued discussion of proposed zoning regulations and I'm gonna turn it over to Lynn.
Okay. From the discussion outline, hopefully you have that. I kind of captured the pieces that are in the document. The first thing that we talked about last time that needed to be fixed is in the definitions and for a crop agricultural. So I wrote the primary use of any land for the purpose of growing plants, crops, trees, and other agricultural forest products. It does not include the hobby gardens as an accessory use or personal consumption of the crop. So what I picked up on was the primary use of a lot. We talked about that. And included or excluded the hobby gardens as accessory use on your own lot. So that look good?
Sounds good, man.
Yeah.
Okay. Next definition we had to work on was to define the duplex, a two-family dwelling. And I added the text at the end of that, having singular ownership of the entire two-unit dwelling and the land upon which it is constructed. The discussion we had was, you know, a duplex isn't a duplex if it's split in two and there's two separate owners.
Right.
And that makes it different than the townhouse.
I was just gonna say, this is minor, minor, minor. Do we want to use family in there and as opposed to something else? Family kind of applies something other than...
I think that's a pretty...
Yeah.
That's a journey, turmoil way through single-family residences.
I know, and that's if you look up, Google it, that's exactly the definition you're gonna get. I'm just thinking of, like, when I was in college, I had a roommate.
Yeah.
We were with a family, but we were renting...
Family is defined inherently.
Oh, is it? No, I'm sorry.
I just, family.
And the other thing that was...
What's it say?
In other jurisdictions, and it's another minor point, they included a term, no interior connection between the two units.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know if we need that or not.
Yeah, I remember reading that somewhere.
And I can't remember whether it was Tulsa or someplace else I'd read, but they...
No walls or windows connecting...
Yeah.
They ignore whatever.
Two-unit home, let me, I wrote it down, with no interior connection. I think this would be good to put on there.
Yeah.
So we'd have exterior, because patio's to be, but an interior connection kind of...
That's smart.
Otherwise, it's just a one unit.
Yeah. Other than that, I think it's fine.
Do you want me to read what it says on family?
Sure.
Says, "One or more persons related by blood, marriage, adoption, or group of not more than five unrelated persons, living together and subsisting in common as a single nonprofit housekeeping unit utilizing only one kitchen. A family may include domestic servants employed by said family."
No, it may not.
"A single-family dwelling may not have more than two adults residing in the dwelling per established bedroom and may include minor children."
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't realize we had that definition.
That works.
I was just thinking more in general, family.
So if I amend the end of that, saying, "And having no internal connection between the units."
Interior.
Would there be indication where you have a common interest that...
Just slant it.
Like a foyer or whatever?
Yeah, I don't think that would be an interior connection, would it? You'd still have two separate doors into the two units.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm out, I don't need to be spelled out, but I think that would be acceptable.
Well, I'm just reading from another...
I remember reading that someplace, too.
If I had a memory, I'd remember where it was, I read it.
Okay. Next definition we had to work on, I had to create one for a funeral home. So I added, "An establishment with facilities for the preparation of the dead for burial or cremation for viewing of the body and for funerals. Cremation facilities not covered by this definition." Because we had a distinction of where we're going to allow funeral home versus a crematorium. I didn't define crematorium in our statute anyways, in our regs. But this keeps them separate.
Yeah, that's the only question I had was, are we going to define crematorium somewhere, you know, probably under commercial?
Okay. We also had a discussion then for a need for defining what a self-storage unit was. And it's the storage units, two or more, joined at the side and/or rear walls, having an individual exterior door for each unit intended for rental to individual parties.
That's good to me.
Yeah.
That's different than the warehouse units that we talked about at the end of our list that we already had. And then the last, just add some text to 140709, the government district zone. So it's not reserved, but it says, "Uses of this district are determined by the respective federal government agency or department." Just to have some text under that definition.
That's good. Has to be federal.
Okay. Yeah, because we named the zone the government dash F for federal, so...
Yeah.
Okay. And then the last note, last note, in 141607, the issue that we've had on our table for a couple meetings is, can we determine how old a manufactured unit can be to be moved into our R1M zones? So last week, Dan, maybe you were gonna come up with some answer.
Yeah, the notes I made on that were just some points that I think we need to address in however we end up wording this. First of all, I think we should prohibit mobile homes, period. In other words, anything built prior to 1976.
I believe we have that in the reg.
Yeah. And then, you know, of course, any unit that's already here and in place would be grandfathered, as it was properly maintained. No new manufactured housing installations. Wait, let me start over. New manufactured housing installations covered by this standard manufactured or and/or rep responsibility. That's meaning that if somebody wanted to bring in a brand-new manufactured home, and I'm kind of tying this into the building code, because I want to put something in the building code about manufactured homes as well. And in reading the standards for manufactured homes, the federal standards, it says that the manufacturer, on new installations, the manufacturer is responsible for the unit meeting the federal standard. And they have to have inspection, you know, standards, you know, kind of supervised by the government. If it's, if there has to be some completion of construction on site, in other words, it's a double-wide or something like that, or you have to install secondary, you know, air conditioning or something like that on site, the manufacturer or the representative of the manufacturer that's doing the installation is responsible for that inspection to make sure that when it's all complete, that it meets the federal standard. So somehow I need to build that into the building code, too, that if somebody wants to move a manufactured home in, they have to show evidence that, to the building inspector, that it meets all the federal standards. So that leaves, what if somebody wants to move in a manufactured home that was built after 1976, but it could have been 1977? It's still pretty darn old, but it was manufactured originally under the new standard. And I think we would have a hard time prohibiting somebody from moving something in here just because it's old, you know, if it's in really good shape. So I just, I think we should have some kind of a point in here about used units being brought in that were manufactured since, you know, to the new standard, must pass an inspection by a certified representative.
Do they lift them off of their previous concrete foundation where they were sitting and bring them here somehow?
Oh, yeah. Well, you can move a stick-built house as far as that goes.
Okay.
Yeah, they...
Most of them, they can just put the wheels back on.
Yeah, they back them up, put the wheels back on.
Wait, wait, are we talking about mobile homes or manufactured homes?
No, we're talking about manufactured homes.
Manufactured homes, the term replaces mobile home in 1977.
There is no such thing, technically, as a mobile home anymore unless it was built before 1976. Now they're called manufactured home, residential...
Residential design.
Design.
That replaces modular home, middle term.
So it's the same concept.
Yeah. They're transported and used.
Really can't do anything, so long as it's built after 77, other than...
Other than require that...
Requires still being federal.
That it re-passed an inspection before we would issue an occupancy permit.
It doesn't seem like it would be much different than inspecting a site-built home.
It wouldn't be, except for the fact that...
Like, as you can't see inside the walls.
That whoever does the inspection has to be approved by the federal government, by HUD or whoever, because it's a federal standard.
So I mean, just meeting...
Can't be somebody familiar with the federal... Can we really get, or could they really, is that realistic that they could get such a person?
I don't know.
I mean, I don't want to pass a regulation that's so difficult that it's impossible to do.
Yeah, why do you need that?
We want to make sure it hasn't been modified, it still meets the...
But can a building inspector check the outlets and check the plumbing and determine?
That, 1976 is 40 years.
The federal standard, I haven't read the federal standard, but I'll bet it's this thick.
No, I'm just saying that, just like they would a site-built home, can't a building inspector examine the plumbing and the electric outlets and...
But is our building inspector gonna be familiar with the federal standards put in place in 1977?
Well, he's not assuring the federal standards.
Yes, he is.
But he has, that's what I'm saying, needs to happen. I don't want somebody going to an auction somewhere, buying an old manufactured home that was built since 1976, that may have had two garages added on to it at some point, that they, you know, tear down and put wheels on and drag in here to Holiday Island and set it up.
You don't even have to go to some auction. There's one on Facebook, the marketplace, for sale in Holiday Island. Not from Holiday Island, but they put it on this website. 1970s mobile home, need to remodel it.
Yeah.
You could do a lot of damage in one of those 40 years.
Well, whatever regulations you put in here has to be doable.
That's right, that's my point.
But we can't, I don't know that we did expect our building inspector to be familiar with federal standards for a mobile home.
And then how are we gonna acquire somebody that...
Well, I know, that's what I mean, I don't want to...
The burden isn't on us to find somebody to do the inspection.
No, but we can't...
The burden is on the person that wants to move the unit in.
But we can't put a restriction that's impossible for them to do either. I mean, if it's impossible or nearly impossible to find a federal inspector to do that, I don't want to pass something that they can't...
So what's the alternative?
I don't know. Do we have any ref...
Tell them they can't move it in?
Do we have any reference to other cities? I mean, that would, you know, that's, you know, to take past. Point, is it doable? If it's doable, I don't have a problem with it. If it's absolutely impossible to do, I don't think we should be passing something that you cannot do. And it doesn't have to be a 77, it could be an 80. It could, I mean, it could be... You could tear one up in a lot.
It could be two years old.
It could be two years old of the piece of crap, but if that's, we're not...
Well, I think Ken may have a good point. There's bound to be other communities with manufactured housing parks or whatever. Why can't we see what they're doing?
There's mobile home parks, you know, all around us. And they have to, surely they have, they have some kind of restrictions because you, I mean, you don't want to draw, you know, drag something in that's...
Or the city has restrictions.
I think, I don't know if Berryville has one or not, I'm pretty sure Green Forest does. Eureka's got the bulk of the mobile home parks, RV parks, mobile home parks.
Well, RV parks a little different.
Yes, no. I, you know, we take, there's a couple, there's a mobile home park in Eureka that we did Wheels on Wheels to down there off the highway.
It's, it might be outside the city limits.
That I don't know.
Well, the one I'm thinking of is right at the Kings River, before you cross the bridge, going toward...
Well, that's, that's not, that's out in the country, so...
Berryville might have one inside...
I thought Green Forest, I thought I'd seen one.
And Green Forest might.
Oh, God. But there's one down there in Eureka, it's not, it's two blocks off, less than two blocks off the highway.
Is that, oh, where they're across from Bavarian and that cemetery?
And that, not the Bavarian.
The Higger either.
Yeah. I don't think that this is that far-fetched to require that that be inspected because the federal standard for modification of a manufactured home requires that, if it has a certification sticker on the, on the mobile home that said that it was manufactured and inspected to that standard, that whoever does the modification has to certify that after the modification is done, the, you know, the original structure still meets the standard. That if you tie, if you build a garage onto your mobile home or onto your manufactured home and you tie the roofs together, you have to somehow certify that the load-bearing capacity of that new roof structure still meets the federal standard. So the, you know, the federal standard kind of dictates that this be done.
Okay.
And I guess we could, you know, we could, I don't think we want to just be the only community around here that ignores the federal standard. So if you want to buy a little trailer and, you know, put it on a lot someplace, go to Holiday Island.
I'm not suggesting we be the only community, that's why I suggested we look at other communities. See what kind of regulation they had.
If it won't fly, we change it later. Yeah. That's probably what we have to do. Maybe it's not as undoable as it seems to be. Like, obviously, if they put a new one in...
Well, if they have to find the inspector, that's fine, too.
Yeah. If a new one is certified by a manufacturer, then they could get somebody... Would, if, you know, if they bought, you know, there are a lot of trailer or mobile home sub-dealers and, you know, they take, and they take in trade-ins.
Yeah.
So, you know, we could, if we contacted one of those, they would, would they have to re-inspector?
Yeah. First and foremost, you know, if somebody wants to move a manufactured home into Holiday Island, that's not the kind of thing you just hook up to your fifth-wheel pickup and pull in here.
Probably pretty costly.
You're gonna hire somebody that don't know what you're doing anyway.
Well, let's leave it in, that's, and then if we have to deal with it...
So what I penciled in then, at the end of the first sentence, it says, 141608D/HH are required, period. Used MHU must pass an inspection provided by the owner to ensure compliance with federal standards.
That's it.
Yes, sounds good to me.
Yeah. Dan? If that causes a problem, we'll deal with it later.
I'd say if it comes out, I have to use some more verbiage in the building code.
Okay. The next sentence then talks about the prohibition, prohibits the placement of mobile home within its power limits. So you're concerned about doing that, it's in this very line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Then we had some discussion about fees and what things were gonna cost us for posting and reviews of documents and what have you. So I did some research, found this fees from a different municipality and paste it in 1430.01 and did, you know, did some modifications to make it fit us, I guess. So my point or my question is, is this suitable for us and then are we going to have additional fees?
Question number one.
Okay.
Explain it to me. I'm not quite sure. It looked pretty intimidating and I'm not quite sure what I'm looking at here.
1430-01, page 58. It says, "There are fees that shall be imposed to cover a portion of the costs of public notices and other expenses as may be incurred in connection with processing of applications, plan reviews, amendments, permits, variances, and other matters pertaining to the planning council, building inspector, and/or board of adjustment." So it's a, it says that we're going to charge fees for certain zoning-type questions or issues.
Right.
Okay. And then it sets out in paragraph B that there's an attached schedule of fees. And then the prohibition in C, "Before any action shall be taken, as provided in these regulations, applicants shall submit a fee with the application in accordance with the city codes. Under no condition shall some, or any part thereof, be refunded for failure of said action to be approved by the city." So it basically says, you have to pay the fee and don't expect to be refunded if you get denied.
Okay. So if I, if I want to, let's say I own a parcel here in Holiday Island and I want to, I want to divide that up into four lots and build houses. The first thing I have to do is bring a concept lot to the planning commission.
Yeah, because you'd be...
With a $50 fee.
You'd be a developer. Is that the fee I have in the appendix?
Yeah, concept lot, $50.
Okay.
And then everybody says, okay, that looks, that looks pretty good. And it's gonna be residential, so what's a concurrent plot?
Good question.
Plaid.
Plaid.
I'm not certain.
Page 62.
Okay.
You got a concurrent plaid, you got a preliminary and a final, and you paid for each one of those?
This is the fee schedule that I copied, so we can use it or not, but that's, that's my answer to the question. I'm not certain what it is.
I wonder if we need to go to their...
Where is that?
This is on page 62.
It's the appendix.
I'm seeing comments, where is that?
It's the...
Oh, it's the heading, okay.
Yeah, it's the heading.
The heading.
Yeah, that's good.
I'm not certain what a concurrent is.
Hopefully, we don't know what it is, we're going to need it.
Okay.
I would say, I would say preliminary and final would be concurrent, makes no...
Yeah, because it, so if, again, if I'm the mini-developer here and I want to build four houses, I'd have to come with a concept, with the original mod, that'd cost me $50.
Yeah.
And I would come back later with a preliminary, but more fully developed plaid plan that, and that would cost me $200.
Yeah.
And then when I get all of the engineering drawings and the street elevations and all...
It's, it's a different timing. The preliminary plaid is what they bring with their complete development plan that the planning commission would have to approve or disapprove or put conditions on it. The builder goes out then and does his work. When he's all done, he brings back a final plaid where precisely all these corners are and where all this stuff lies.
All right.
And so that's what gets filed with the county when he's all done and we approve the final plaid.
Do we need a definition of that in here?
Yeah.
These fee schedules?
What process does this fit in with? Is there a documented process?
There isn't a documented process in the zoning, it's in the building code. It'd be in the process you go through to get things done.
It would, it would be in...
It's more than building, though, if it's a development.
Well, it's development, right.
Sort of a larger thing.
There is a section that we haven't approved and it had to do with subdivisions. And it might be in there that I haven't studied. The process might be defined.
We're gonna X out concurrent.
I think, yeah, I would agree. I don't know what a concurrent plaid would be in the timing. And I got this advice from the planning chair from Eureka, talked with her quite a bit.
Yeah, I think if you would put some definition, just make a note alongside each one of these tables that says, you know, what, what this step of the process involves.
Okay.
Do they have some code on this that we could, that these are referring to, that we could copy also?
I do have the Eureka Springs subdivision text, I don't have it with me, but I have it. So it's okay that we're gonna charge these kinds of fees or charge for these kinds of actions? Now let's talk about the amounts, are we okay?
That was my question, what, how do these compare to what they're paying now?
We have...
There aren't being any of it now. We don't have any subdivision.
We don't have any. This is not building, this is...
Well, we have examples going on right now that are gonna fall smack dab into this. You know, they're up in the park, they're building those storage units. That's, that's Unit 2151C3 is the, is the total of the totality of the acreage. The only thing they have on paper right now as far as a plan to do with that is to put storage units along one end of it. There is no fully developed plan for the rest of that acreage. And of course, this was all started before, you know, we came along. But if this were to happen next year at this time, before they would get a building permit to build their storage units, they would have to come to the planning commission with a fairly well-thought-out plan for that whole acreage.
Yeah, they're all up there, they don't have roofs in and around it yet, so...
You know, they, one of the things that we, you know, one of the things that I think we need to try to get some control over is, you know, in the past, there, you know, there intentionally was no... there intentionally was no comprehensive plan of what to do with an entire parcel or an entire area.
Correct.
And the logic was, well, we don't know what we're gonna do with it yet, so we're just gonna leave it undefined until we figure out what we're gonna do with it.
Until the development.
Now, what you end up with is hodgepodge. You know, well, this, this seems like a good idea today, this seems like a good idea today, and you end up with a hodgepodge instead of a plan.
Or you could put practically anything anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what we're, that's why we have a shooting range right next to a park, right next to a, a medical clinic and, uh, you know, there's no plan.
And a, and a storage shed that looks like a shed.
Yeah, and storage units now and, uh, so, um, yeah, I think this is good, I, I think it's necessary. And if you're doing a non-residential commercial development, I don't think eight hundred dollars is an unreasonable fee.
Well, or two, I didn't, non-residential is eight hundred, okay, okay. And then residential is ten or less. Okay, so the, the fees, you're just explaining what the fees are gonna cover, and then-
Where the breakpoints are.
And, and then the city council may present a resolution to waive or reduce fees.
Just about a highly, highly nitpicky thing. Instead of, in the table, instead of saying ten or less and then twenty-five or less, the second line probably should say eleven to twenty-five.
Okay.
And then twenty-six or more.
Okay, okay, alright.
Would, uh, would we want that second paragraph, may present a resolution to city council to waive or reduce development or something? Federal or, or else? Sure, just a thing. I guess that'd be over, Adam?
I don't see any problem with the verbiage on fourteen thirty oh one.
I just wonder if we really wanna open it up to that.
Well, the city council ultimately has an authority anyhow.
Yeah.
The planning commission can only make recommendations, the council has to adopt an ordinance to put it into law.
Shouldn't it follow the, uh, to appeal it to, um, like we set up earlier? To the, to move the board of adjustment?
Well, this doesn't talk about an appeal, it just says that the council may present a resolution.
If it's something that we were trying to get done, then, you know, yeah.
You're giving them an, and the city council would be giving them an incentive of sorts.
Yeah, like, like a tax break or something.
Like a tax break.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, Amazon wants to put a distribution center up there, you know, instead of giving them three million dollars or thirty million dollars.
Yeah, I'm sure they're really gonna appreciate that eight hundred dollar break.
I think, uh, I would guess that this, that section, that paragraph I modified to be city council member was there because this table I copied from was like three pages long and I just picked out these that I thought were appropriate for Holiday Island. It came from Fayetteville, that's where I got them from.
Fayetteville.
Okay. So, go ahead.
Grading and drainage, then, uh.
Okay, well, I, I assumed, I assumed that, uh, leaving that there with, because Hy-Sid would be involved with that and getting the water department or whoever it is, the roads department involved in looking at what people were doing, there might be some expense that the city should reimburse Hy-Sid for, so this helps cover that.
You know, I, I can see where this would be, you know, as an example, when you drive through P Ridge now, they have, uh, between P Ridge and Beddell Rogers, there's two huge subdivisions going up.
Centerton, I think it's worth a, you know, Centerton, north into-
Yeah, they, they put in, uh, you know, they put in all the sewer and water and everything else. But I can imagine that in clearing that property, that they probably had to do, you know, create some drainage ditches and stuff like that. And all of that dirt work would have been done, you know, prior to actually, uh, you know, clearing the rest of the property and grading it for, for, um, you know, curb and gutter and stuff like that, so. I don't see a problem with having it in here, I don't know, can't really think of any situation right now with the current land available on the island where it would come up.
Well, you know, I don't know what authority, how it would be administered, that someone would say, yeah, I'm gonna grade this property, and someone says, no, you can't. I mean, do, do we have an authority now? If someone wants to take off a quarter of a hill so they can build a house down there, can someone say, no, you can't, because you're gonna create a landslide problem below it? Or you're not gonna do anything with that field dirt you're taking away, you're just gonna push it down the hill? I mean, those kinds of questions.
The, I'm, I'm working on culverts and drainage, that's the main change that I need to make to the building code. Uh, it was one very short paragraph, or it is one very short paragraph, in the, uh, building code as it is right now, that's gonna expand to almost a full page. Um, I have not, at this point, dealt with drainage in general, but, um, Mickey Feinfield has been helping me with this. And he said that there is a state regulation right now, and he was gonna, I think he was gonna try to find it for me, that prohibits changing the, the direction of the flow of water so that it, you know, directs the water onto somebody else's property or something like that. We haven't done anything to directly consider whether or not the, uh, there'd be an impact of, um, of a mudslide or something on somebody's downhill property. But that, in this, in Holiday Island, that's probably something we need to consider.
Yeah.
And, uh-
So, you know, it just, it was, it came to mind looking at the excavations going up around the corner, they've taken out a significant chunk of earth. And it looks like it went downhill. I don't know if it went down a hill on their property or the next lot.
Well, I think most of it, they tried to keep from going downhill so that they had a flat area to build on.
Okay.
And, uh-
It looks totally unsafe to me.
Well-
We'll see.
That's one, that's one area where, uh, I'm gonna, again, ask Mickey to, to give me some help in inspecting the, uh, we're not doing building inspection per se yet, and, um, and that building permit was issued by the old planning commission anyway. But I think Mickey and I need to walk down there someday and, when they're working on it, and just convince ourselves that-
Look great.
That, uh, that we're sitting on, on bedrock and not just sitting on the loose dirt that they scraped down there.
Yeah.
As we move forward, uh, you know, if somebody does wanna put in a subdivision, I mean, that, that's gonna be, somebody's gotta determine how that will impact the water system, the sewage system.
Yep.
Drainage.
I think that's covered in that whole section on subdivisions that we haven't gotten to yet.
Right, so.
But, yeah.
Make that, um, make, yeah.
It's like if someone wanted to put a Tyson plant over there on twenty-three and an area annexed by the city or something. And it would tie into our sewer and water system perhaps, and, uh, that would be impossible to handle now.
Well, in, in a previous life, we had a subdivision, a developer that wanted to put in, I don't remember how many houses, thirty-five or forty, and, uh, we determined that unless we did significant improvements to sewage, they couldn't handle it, so.
The, uh, and it's, it's a relatively minor thing, but another thing that has to be considered is, uh, street addresses. It seems to be a minor thing, but in actuality, it's a very important thing. And, you know, we've kinda lost a little bit of control of that too. I don't know, I can't figure out who assigned the street numbers for the houses that Terry Presley built down.
Fairway Drive.
On the island. Cause they're not in data scout and they're not on that list of addresses that the planning commission had. And I'm assuming that they do have street numbers assigned.
Although, when I looked at that list you gave me from the planning commission that had the street addresses, I don't know if you looked at it, but I would swear I saw some empty lots, I was looking at our street, and empty lots on my street that had been pre-assigned to numbers.
Every lot, at one, at one point in time, every lot in Holiday Island had a street number already assigned to it, and, uh-
And you won't find those in the county records though, right? I mean, it doesn't come up when you pull it up in the county record.
The, uh, interestingly enough, the county assessor called me yesterday and asked me if we had a list of all the street numbers because, um-
Cause they're probably doing their election commission thing. They're probably doing their election commission mailing to tell us what ward we live in.
Now, now, this had to do with Carol Electric.
Oh, okay.
If Carol Electric gets a request to hook up-
For a new house.
A, um, power at a, at a new address, then Carol Electric requires somebody to certify that that street address is correct for that property. And she was gonna send me the form and everything and, uh, you know, she really didn't know who was supposed to do that, and I don't either. And I said, I guess I can do it. But the first thing, first and foremost, we need a, a complete up-to-date list. And, you know, way, way back when, they had all these lots and they assigned, somebody assigned street numbers to them. And then they replotted this and, you know, some of those, those street numbers changed.
Like Woodstale was all replotted?
Yeah, and, um, and now there's parcels with houses being built on them that have street numbers assigned to them. Um, almost, uh, I, I bet a hundred dollars that nobody has given those street numbers to nine-one-one. So if those people, you know, somebody has a heart attack at that house, nine, you know, nine-one-one emergency responders wouldn't, they'd come up a blank when they blocked that address.
How did those houses on Fairway get the, you know, some A, B, C, and D and all that as their house number?
Uh, those were assigned by, the, the ones on the other side of the street from Terry Presley, that, that, that started out being a mess too. But they are, there is a, a one A, one B, one C, one D. The, the houses on the other side of the street are-
Those were the ones that walked back.
One A, one B, one C, one D.
Yeah, is that because they ran out of numbers?
Yes, because it's-
It's because it was a parcel, it was a parcel and they subdivided it.
And the number of cars across the street.
The parcel was assigned to the address of one Fairway Drive. So when they divided it up into four, they couldn't give it three Fairway Drive cause there was already a three Fairway Drive, so they made it one A, B, C, and D.
So it, those, those houses, when people see those houses' address, it makes it look like they're living in a apartment.
It does.
Well, that, that, now we, now we know how Beaver Drive got numbers that are not in sequence.
Right, yeah, for Beaver Drive up on the mountain, it, it goes out of sequence around the corner.
It would be nice if it was logical and fit a pattern. But at this point in time, I would just be happy to have an up-to-date table that has every lot with its corresponding street address.
Yeah.
So, when somebody is gonna build a subdivision, that's gotta be part of the planning process. You know, what are these lots gonna be, what are the streets gonna be called, what's the numbering system for the houses on the streets? Who's gonna coordinate that with nine-one-one?
Somebody got to live at one key drive.
Well, and I assume that is something the city can determine, the city has the right privilege to determine.
I don't know.
Well, some of the like county things you determine.
That's what Berryville and Erika Springs, they have a nine-one-one coordinator where that person is in the city. Someone carries that title.
Well, some is, are you saying the nine-one-one coordinator decides the street numbers?
The, the, what I heard from, I think it was Berryville, the nine-one-one coordinator of Berryville coordinates with the county nine-one-one and the county courthouse and comes up with, and the postal service comes up with an address.
Yeah, somebody told me one time, two, that, I don't remember who it was, but somebody told me that the postal office assigns the street numbers, but I don't believe that would be the case. I think they need to be involved. Although, if you want mail delivery, you have to take a card up there that gives them your address. I'm sure there's house numbers assigned to those houses, but there's no record of who came up with the numbering system and, and, uh-
Can I go back to the grading and drainage permit sentence? Uh, is this, it, are these fees, this section of the code under this fee page, is that referenced in some part of the text regulations?
It's probably-
Referred to or something that such-and-such fee may must be collected or something?
Well, it says in the procedure, before any action shall take place, the applicant shall submit the fee, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, so where's the process that describes that they're going through that they pay a fee for?
We don't have that in this code.
So we need it.
Yeah, it's probably in that subdivision section.
We need it.
Right.
Well, or in something about grading, grading and drainage. That might apply also to just that house on State Line. Grading and drainage, or any new house being built.
If you're gonna go move dirt, you need a grading, drainage permit to move dirt or rock.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just suggesting that having a fee without a process that goes with it is probably not gonna work, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, we need, we probably need some kind of a, we probably need a definition of what constitutes grading and drainage because, um, in the building code, it says that if you're gonna build a house, you can clear your lot before you get a building permit. Does that constitute grading and, um, drainage?
I hope you're gonna change the flow of water at Mike.
So a grading is, you're moving soil, you're moving the, the earth to make room for something else.
But, but this is grading and drainage only as it relates to zoning.
Really?
Right, that's, that's the purpose for these fees, they're zoning fees.
So how does grading and drainage pertain to zoning?
This would, that would be applicable if you were, you're setting up a new subdivision or something.
Yeah, right, right. I'm willing to take it out for now, until we have the procedure and definitions and all that.
I'm sure we need it someplace.
Yeah. It can always be added in.
Was it in the Fayetteville zoning regulations or whatever?
I didn't look for it specifically.
Okay. These might have been fees that pertain to multiple kinds of regulations.
That's why I said their, their fee schedule was like three pages.
I don't know, cause it's less than half a page.
It included everything, it had, it had the building permit fees and everything else.
All the various chapters in the file.
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
I, I'll take it out, I think taking it out now.
But let's keep it in mind for the future.
Okay, well, now we're down to the green.
No, uh, there's another page, page sixty-three. Of these fees, there's page sixty-three.
I thought we-
Headlines with zoning, so you get the rezoning, accessory buildings, conditional use permits, home occupations, border adjustment fees.
This is, oh, okay.
Page sixty-three is the, is the next fee schedule, the, the rest of the-
Oh, yeah.
The fourteen thirty fees schedule.
Yeah, okay.
So how would you interpret a, an accessory dwelling zoning fee? When do I pay that?
Accessory dwelling, well, I need to remove that, we've decided ADUs are not gonna be permitted.
Exciting, what?
An accessory dwelling unit, in our last conversation, we're not gonna permit that.
No, mother of law houses.
So I need to remove that from that table.
Oh, in other words, dwell, I see, dwelling.
Yeah, the dwelling part, I need to take that out.
Yeah, I missed the dwelling part, I was thinking accessory, there's a whole chapter on accessory uses.
Right.
But we did say that, didn't we?
Yeah, I'll take out the A D U line.
So, uh, let's just take a different- So, uh, let's just take a different one. Home occupation.
Okay.
If, and which is an acceptable use to have certain home occupations.
Right.
Where does it say you have to pay a fee?
We don't, we haven't adopted that section yet about home occupations, whether we're gonna charge fees or permits or what. We don't have that yet.
So is that gonna be in a different section of the, a different title? Remember? Not the zoning?
I, if, if you wanna do something and it's permissible in the zoning regulations, you wouldn't need a permit for anything.
You, you would need a business permit if you were having a business out of your house, wouldn't you?
Well, someday we may have.
I'm just trying to figure out where, where in the code getting a permit is explained. So we know where to tie this dollar amount back to. And I don't know whether a permit is the same thing as a business license or not.
Okay, we have a definition in home occupation. Any occupation or profession carried on by the inhabitants, which is clearly incidental or secondary to the use of the dwelling or dwelling purposes. Which does not change the character thereof, which is conducted entirely within the main building, and which meets all applica- applicable standards and use limitations that are described herein. And then we have the word home occupations occurring again under fourteen fourteen oh three, residential accessory uses. It doesn't say in that section that we are gonna charge a fee.
So are these fees that we pulled from Fayetteville again?
Most of them are, yes.
So.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe Fayetteville charged a fee but, for a permit, but, uh, Tannehill County didn't, perhaps?
Yeah.
But the way I interpret this whole fee schedule thing is, you know, if I need permission to do something. And I come to the planning commission with a request, then there's a fee associated with it. But if it's already off, allowed in the zoning ordinance, I don't need permission to do it. So I don't need a permit, I don't need a fee.
So you're saying you need a fee for a conditional use or a variance, maybe? Not just anything that's allowed?
If, if it's allowed only as a conditional use, then you would have to apply for that conditional use permit. But if there's, if there's no objection to doing something.
Well, there is, there is a conditional use fee line in here, hundred dollars.
See, see, we're not talking about building permits here, we're talking about jobs.
So I mean, it, uh, these do seem to apply to zoning, the rezoning, we take out the accessory dwelling and the conditional use permit. But then you get more specific when you get to manufactured homes and home occupation and stuff. Maybe those are special added fees?
Yeah, what would, what, why would you have a fee for zo- zoning a manufactured home?
Well, again, home occupation, there's an initial permit fee and a renewal fee. It sounds like a business.
Well, that's an occupancy code.
Sounds like a business license, right?
No, it's occup- occupancy code. And I don't know how you would have initial permit and a renewal. And I don't know how, why we would have a planning or zoning permit for a manufactured home. You got, you could put a manufactured home someplace where you can't.
Well, I think it's listed there because you're not gonna, you're not applying to stick-built something. So it makes a mechanism for you to collect a fee because you're gonna have to do some work to inspect it. You know, it's not, it's not a stick-built, it's not a site-built house.
Okay, but is that not?
So you don't need a building permit?
You don't need a building permit, you need a manufactured home unit permit.
Okay. That's really cheap.
Is that not covered in that other, in the?
Building code? I don't think you have that in your code.
The building code, damn. No, okay, so, okay, that's what this is, uh?
Yeah, I don't know, I.
I mean, uh, you know, I'm afraid we're getting apples and oranges here.
Well, there, you know, there, a lot of these regulations do tie together. But I, I'm still kinda stuck on the fact that, that, you know. If, if what I wanna do is allowed in the, in the zoning ordinance system.
You shouldn't have paid?
I don't, I don't pay anything. I, I'm not asking for anything. I don't pay anything.
You never need to go to the planning commission?
Right, never need to go to the planning commission. But if what I wanna do is, you know, requires a, uh, a variance to the code, I have two options. I can go to the building inspector and request a building permit, and he can reject it, and I can appeal it to the board of adjustment. Or I could go directly to the planning commission and say, I know this, I know the building inspector's gonna turn me down, so I'd like to talk about this. You know, can I get a, uh, variance to let me do this? And I'm willing to pay a two-hundred-dollar fee or whatever it is to get you to take a look at it for me. And, um, so, um. We don't need to have fee, we don't need to have a fee schedule for something that's never gonna happen. Period. Like if somebody comes and says, I wanna talk about putting manufactured homes in unit eight. Uh, that, that's never gonna happen, so, you know, why would, I don't know.
What about the, the, the crack ones we talked about moving in, but, well, you, you, I mean, if they're allowed, I mean, they move them in, where, where do we?
You're gonna have to have an occupancy code or?
Cause there's got to be some permit or something to allow to bring it in.
They still have to have a building permit to, to build, to bring, that, that's what I'm working on. It's not covered in enough detail right now in the building code, but I'm, I'm working on it. When I'm done, it will be.
Okay.
Well, then this. Well, then this manufactured home stuff here is irrelevant, maybe, in here.
It.
You're not gonna zone a manufactured home in someplace that's not allowed.
If you're, if you're gonna do, if the plan is to cover manufactured homes in the permitting process and a fee schedule in the building code, I'm okay with taking it up here. I mean, that's appropriate, I think.
Yeah, let's remember to put it in the building code.
Right.
Well, you, you, I know you, I know they currently do that. I mean, they, if somebody's gonna move a mobile home in here, they go to the planning commission and get it permitted.
I think it's totally appropriate that if somebody wants to, if somebody owns a, uh, a parcel. And they wanna develop that parcel, whether it be two houses or twenty houses or whatever. It's totally appropriate to require them to apply to the planning commission for approval to do that. And, and these fees, I think that first, other than concurrent lot that we already talked about taking out, I think those, that first battery of fees makes total sense to me.
Okay, yeah.
Everything after that, I'm, I have a little bit of a problem understanding how we would use that.
Well, conditional. Conditional use, that?
Conditional use permits is going to be a totally separate, um, code somewhere. I, I don't know exactly where it's gonna fit, but.
It's here, it's in our, it's in our red dot.
You put cond- conditional permitted, not permitted titles and all over here.
The same, the, the manufactured home and the home occupation, those don't belong in here, I, so. The, the last three, the other two, yeah.
Somewhere we say that, uh, conditional use permit is required. See fee schedule and, and have that continual, conditional use permit be annually renewable, that, that would be fine to have in here.
I'm looking at fourteen twelve. Application. Application, first sentence, "An application shall be made to the, by the property owner and filed with the planning commission secretary upon forms prescribed for that purpose. Accompanied with the supportive, with the appropriate fee established by the city council to, to defray processing costs." That's the first sentence in fourteen twelve oh three, section eight.
So.
So you have to have a fee.
Then under the fee schedule.
That's the application for conditional use.
Conditional, where do I find that?
It's on page sixty-three, I believe.
Okay, so it's not in appendix fourteen thirty oh one?
Yes, it is.
Yep.
But it's the extension on page sixty-three. It carries to the next page.
Yep, conditional use.
Hundred bucks.
I don't have it on page sixty-three. I'm looking at it in the sales spreadsheet.
Oh, that sheet I gave you, um, it'd be the table underneath of where we were just at.
Oh, there it is.
There it is, okay. And part of that conditional use stuff has to do with the notification of the public by posting signs. So we're gonna have some expense on occasion, if not every occasion, to get signs made that we give to the applicant to put on the property and we have to post to the newspapers. You know, I've been watching the Carroll County no- news for over a year, looking for planning commission activity for our surrounding communities. This last week is the first time I saw it. There was two postings for Eureka Springs and one for Green Forest. First time I seen them post anything.
Well, that's interesting because the newspaper shows they meet virtually if, once or twice a month or something and have a whole list of things on their agenda.
And the, the two for Eureka Springs were conditional use permits.
I would suggest under that table then for zoning, you know, accessory dwelling or rezoning, okay, accessory dwelling, okay, conditional use, okay. I would take the part out about manufactured homes because I'm gonna cover that under the building permits.
Right, okay, so.
And the home occupation comes out too.
Yes, I wrote down takeout accessory dwelling, M H U, and home occupations. Take them off that chart.
Right.
Okay.
And the rest of it's good.
Okay.
Okay, then, then down below are supplementary permit fees.
What about the streets and sidewalks?
That's fine. Where you got your sidewalks?
Is that referred to someplace that?
Not here, but in the subdivision stuff I recall seeing it.
It'd be in there, okay.
We may have sidewalks update.
Have you told me?
But it's, and other excavations in public driveway. We may have that quite a bit if someone wants to cut the street to put in a sewer line.
Well, we're, we're gonna make a fortune if I should get the streets.
Well, these aren't set to make a fortune, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
Just basically to recover your cost.
So supplementary for emergency inspection, there's a fee charged for that, for twenty dollars. Uh, reinspection if they come back after they've identified, identified some things. I think it's appropriate, that's why I put it here, it's my recommendation, I just can't. And then the other looks like government ease or speak ease for affordable housing, homeless shelters. We may have someone want to come and develop, uh, some property for that, so it's a place to, to say that we're not gonna charge someone for doing that. And we don't have any city-owned facilities yet, but there's a statement there. I pondered it some, didn't take it lightly when I based it in here. I said I pondered some, but I didn't take it lightly when I based it on.
Affordable housing, right?
Yeah, and the, the supplemental.
What, on the city, city-owned facilities, do we need that district in there also?
Uh, we, we, in my mind, we don't have any interest in what they do as far as charging fees for what they might change. But they have to, they have to come to the planning commission, but I don't think we should charge them for it. I don't know. What's your thought?
Maybe we should put that in here.
Ah, they charged us the use of this room?
Uh, I don't, I mean, I mean, it, right now, I mean, they, they got, they own all the property. I mean, uh, you know, any, uh, any, you know, the green spaces and all, and, uh.
You could, you could exclude any government-owned, any government or government subdivision-owned property from fees.
I don't know.
But I think it needs to be excluded specifically when I'm arguing.
Okay, from the title, the city-owned facilities and the government facilities, including Hyacinth?
Or city and government.
To you from the board commissioners.
Hello, Wendy.
We have a representative here. Uh, I think that the, I think the district should be exempted from fees. However, not exempted from the process. So, and I'm sitting here thinking that one of these days the district is going to get ready to do something with the rec center. And I'm wondering if they have it in mind to come to the city for a building permit.
They do, they should.
They should, we have a. No, we're gonna, we're gonna sell a rec center to you.
No.
For a dollar.
Our first city park.
I think, I think, I think the.
Okay, that, uh, I think we're okay there then.
Well, but the suggestion was to change city-owned facilities to city and Hyacinth, or city government and Hyacinth. Should we do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think, I remember reading there somewhere that the city council can waive the fees anyway.
They did for government.
Yeah.
We can pass a resolution, that's.
Something like that.
That's that second sentence right in here.
So I don't see, I mean, whichever way you wanna do it, I, I, I don't think we would, we wanna include it.
If we, this, uh, si- page sixty, sixty-one, the appendix fourteen oh seven oh two, the residential district lots, yards and regulations. We're backing up now. We're going into the table fourteen seven oh two.
Okay, we're, we're done with the.
What page are you on?
It's on page sixty. It's the, if you're looking at the spreadsheet, man, it's.
Residential district lots.
Come back on the, any others on that?
Page sixty.
I'm on page.
We are in this big long one, man.
Penalty for violations, that's what we're on?
No, fourteen oh seven dot twenty, appendix.
Cable.
The table, page sixty.
I, my, my only.
Nevermind, I was.
Page sixty.
My only question is why on, like, on unit one, and they're, unit three and four, the setbacks on, but the, these figures you got, these setbacks. Um, did you get these to fall from the, the covenants?
Okay, the information that's in fourteen oh seven oh two for front side, minimum side, and corner lot side, and rear is all from the covenant. I penciled in for discussion the minimum street frontage, so the minimum width of the front of the lot. Those columns are added on my benefit because we talked about probably needing that in our last meeting. Uh, where the fields are with a V in it, I have a covenant, but it's void of that information. Where it's blank, I don't have a covenant.
Okay.
On the minimum ameasement on the, on the far right-hand side, those are from the covenants. Maximum height is covenant and maximum lot coverage is covenant. So one thing that's on here that's been created by me is the minimum street frontage.
Minimum street frontage is like most.
Of a lot.
Minimum street frontage is like most, seventy-five, seventy-five feet, right?
Yeah.
And so what do you do with these thirty-foot lots out there?
We're talking about a new lot proposal. This doesn't change anything that's existing already. It says if you're gonna build a lot, you have to plot it seventy-five feet for residential in an R one, or sixty feet in an R two. And I think it's fifty feet in R three at the bottom, somewhere there's an R three. There's an R three, I put that at twenty feet, and you have one twenty-five.
Did, did the...
I just guessed it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Take number, do you, uh, is that from somebody else, some other city, or?
Um, it's from where I used to live, and one of the city was seventy feet, that I read, for frontage.
Okay.
But, you know, looking at Polly Island, most lots are fairly wide. And it's what do we wanna maintain our community to look like, we want it chopped up in a bunch of little lots, or we want acreage lots, what do we want future development to look like?
Here again, this will come into play when, if and when more of these parcels get, well, chopped up and...
What, what did you, what did you put in here for residential that's not units, I don't see that.
Sorry, your question again, what?
You, uh, these, these min, minimum dimensions here where you have min, main, min, minimum street frontage.
Yes.
Okay, C one, C two?
Oh, that's commercial.
I don't see one for R one.
The residential is the table fourteen oh seven oh two. Are you on the right table?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all residential, R one, two and three.
Okay. I don't, I don't know which ones they are though, okay, okay, but they're covered in that, all right.
It says residential lot, yard.
R one through R one, okay, I got you, I got you, got you, got you.
For instance, unit sixteen is R one, so the data's there for R one. In unit three, there is R one and R two, so there's data for R two.
Yeah, okay, got you.
So as we move forward into the future and further define some other zones in, in these units, then we can build onto the table.
Since, since these are front total and all these, these all you lifted from the covenants, so we really can't adjust those.
Well, we, I think we can in the future, but I documented what's in the covenant.
It wouldn't be, yeah.
We can change them if we think that they're wrong for the future, we can certainly change them.
Well, I think ten-foot setback is ridiculous.
Well, in unit one, that's what they have.
Wow.
They all said that in three and four.
Yeah, I see that.
And fifteen feet in thirteen and fourteen.
Uh, I, a minimum of twenty-five feet, that, that's close to you wanna, should be able to get to a street. But...
Is it twenty-five, is your next door neighbor in the White House on the curb, are they twenty-five feet from the street? That White House.
He probably got a waiver, I don't know.
Okay, so if we have it tighter than, if, if it has to be close to the twenty-five, they're gonna have to have a variance, they're gonna have to come to the commission.
I, you know, I don't agree with giving the variance, you know, there's a reason that they got twenty-five feet from the, well, this is not twenty-five feet from the road. Or even his backyard.
There's some there on, uh, the lower part of the Hovdale Drive, one house, they had, they had the blacktop about, they just ended up to get a length of the car parked up.
Across the front of their house.
Front of their house, and there are two, two of them like that.
I know, but half of that, most have blacktops on, on the road right of way, cause you got, you know, you got, the road right of ways are like seventy-five feet and you got, you know, I don't know, forty feet of asphalt. And then the rest of it's ditches, and they covered into ditches and asphalt and that's their, so, anyway. Uh, their house is not twenty-five feet back from the road.
No, no, not at all.
Anyway.
At this point, I wouldn't mess with the...
Well, I'm saying, that's, I'm saying these are the covenants, so I don't think we can do anything about it.
The B means?
Green means it's void in the covenant.
It's not mentioned.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, going forward, if we're, if we plotted out a residential area, you know, the setback ought to be a minimum twenty-five, I think. And I don't know where that would be covered then, that was my question.
We would fill in the number twenty-five in each, for each unit. I'm willing to do that ahead of time, I mean.
Well, I, that's not relevant because we can't change those covenants.
It isn't, it won't be that we'll be changing the covenant, we're setting the state of here's how it's gonna be from here on out.
Yeah, okay. Well, Mike, you know, I...
The, the other problem that I have, and I, I saw it in one of the texts, that you can use distance averaging. And you talk about this lot and six lots either side of it. So if they're all on average of nine and a half feet, then you can place this house nine and a half feet, you'd probably want to do that if you wanna keep the neighborhood looking right. Rather than setting this house back twenty-five feet and the rest of them are nine and a half feet.
Well, but the thing of it is, we can't change anything that's already there.
Right.
So, if we're talking about establishing setbacks, that would be for new, you know...
New parcel splits.
Right, where you take us, and then we should be able to do that. So I, I don't know how you handle that. But that was my question because, uh, for the non-residential, you set these up and, and again, they're based on the existing, uh, units. I don't know.
In the non-residential, yeah.
Huh?
In the Cs, yeah, the commercials and the industrial.
Um, could you just, could, could you just add R one, R two, or three there, or no, I guess not. Um, I guess you could just add it to, up here for unplatted areas or some, another line for unplatted.
Well, it's not that they're unplatted, each unplatted or each parcel is included in a unit. And so we described the setbacks and the, and the offsets by unit.
What is, what is our standard gonna be for develop, you know, three, in one, something replatted?
I'm not opposed to putting twenty-five feet or copying these into the table and build them in right now. I mean, I'm not opposed to doing that, I was just trying to show you what we have.
Yeah, I understand, okay.
For discussion today, for the first time you've seen it, this is what we have in the covenants.
Right.
What we want to look like.
I, I wouldn't put twenty-five feet in across the board. There's a reason why some of these units have a ten-foot front setback right now.
What are you talking about?
Because the lots wouldn't be buildable if you made it a twenty-five foot setback.
I know, but we're talking about where somebody's taking in a platted or, uh, a parcel and they're gonna, you know, you go down on Woods, that's not Woods, they're Woods, um... Over by the rec center, there are those two parcels that...
Shields.
That, you know, that Tom had and he sold, I think Presley bought them and he's got them all staked off. So what are they gonna do there, they gonna set them ten feet from the road?
They're gonna come to the planning commission with a, uh, with a phase one plan and we're gonna look at it and...
I know, but that's what, that's gonna, that's, that's, how they lay those out has to be based on our zoning, and we don't have zoning.
Those parcels you're talking about are located in unit one oh two.
Okay.
Excuse me, unit one seventeen, both of them are one seventeen. One seventeen has a setback of twenty-five, fifteen, five, fifteen and twenty-five.
Okay, so they are in a unit.
Mm-hmm.
But we have parcels that are not in units.
Yes, and that's the last part of our discussion, what are we gonna do with those?
Are you talking that one underwater parcel, cause I thought everything else was in a unit.
What I was talking about was the stakes that are in place along Shields and Appaloosa, across the street.
That, that I thought, it's one seventeen.
Yeah, those are one seventeen.
But he, he was saying, he said there was, there are parcels that aren't in a unit, I was questioning that.
Yes. And I, I don't know if there's units or not, it's, it's this ground, well, I wrote on the map, we'll get to it, on the map I handed out this.
Okay, all right.
Somebody do something like that.
Yeah.
So, I, and my only question is, you know, for zoning, we don't have anything definitive for unplatted property.
We don't have anything if it's not in a unit.
Yeah, that was my question.
Not yet, when we get a zoning map done, we will.
Do we not need that?
We do, that's why we're gonna talk about it.
We weren't, no.
We haven't got there yet.
We haven't gotten to it. The un, the unplatted, not in a unit, properties are on the agenda to talk about.
If it's an unplotted parcel, but it's in a unit, then it's covered in this table right here.
I got that.
Okay.
Right, if it's an unplotted parcel that's not in a unit, or if it's in a unit that doesn't have a covenant, then we're gonna talk about that in just a few minutes.
And then we're gonna add it to the table.
Okay.
We'll see.
All right, so, in, in the study notes, this green, this green I added because I discovered in all my messing around trying to get these tables in, I deleted my footnotes. And so in the footnote, I said, if the, if the field is blank, an empty data field requires plans approval by the city planning commission. So if you're gonna build a unit two oh one, or th, one thirty, or one twenty-nine, you have to come to us. If it has a V, it requires plans approval by the city planning commission. Both empty data fields in the lot, in the V should be supplied by declaration of reservations provided by the developer-owner of any subject property. That's the piece I really wanted to talk about.
Page or section or whatever.
It's this note that I added from, under appendix fourteen dash seven dash two. The footnotes got deleted in my messing around.
Okay.
So it's on page sixty.
I see.
It's on page sixty, that's, that tab.
Okay.
So I haven't seen it.
Moving right on. Right, so I had footnotes down here that disappeared.
Oh.
Talking about the blank fields and the V fields, what are we gonna do about those?
I don't have a copy of that anywhere, your paragraph that's in the...
In these notes I sent, the study notes for today's meeting? That's it right there. Oh, no, you don't have it, I'm sorry, I added this to my notes after I distributed it.
Okay.
I can't, I can't, I can't, I don't even, I don't even got one.
Okay.
That's a secret provision.
I don't know.
The one with the green.
On my study notes for the day?
I don't have it. Empty data field require...
You may have downloaded that from the, from the website, cause I updated it there.
There you go, that's probably what.
The V requires a plan, ah, okay, so what are we gonna try to do today then?
Well, what I was trying to say is, explain what we're gonna do, if someone comes to us and there's nothing in the table, that the field has either got a V in it for void or it's blank. That they have to come to the planning commission for approval.
Yeah, and I think that's fine.
The last sentence though is, that if, if it's empty or a V, it shall be supplied by the developer-owner for any, so we're gonna require the developer-owner to bring us their covenant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
We're gonna seriously somebody to write a unit covenant.
Otherwise, it does not exist.
So that's, that's a question, is that what we're going to do?
I don't know what else we could do.
Because, the, the premise was that we're gonna do the best we can to support the covenants. And I don't want to be in the position to say, okay, it's nine, 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 nine across the board and then someone, wait a minute, my covenant says it's one twenty-two. You know, to be in violation or contrary to the covenant that we don't have a copy of.
Of course, what would prevent them from going and making up a covenant and...
They're correct.
They own the property, they probably owns that whole...
Yeah, I, we... We don't want, I, I'm afraid of exactly that situation. I own this parcel, there's no covenant on it.
I can make it up whatever I want.
And I wanna, I wanna build something right on the street, right on the edge of the street. Well, I'm gonna quick write a covenant, take it over to the county courthouse and file it. And then I'm gonna take that to the city planning commission and say, you can't stop me from doing this because, you know, you're trying to not be in conflict with the covenant. I don't think we should encourage people to write a covenant.
So what is the law, we, we've looked at the law, I know a lot about the state laws versus covenants on lands and, and what, what prevails. So, if the city, it's chicken and egg, if the city comes before the covenant, can you make that covenant invalid?
If, yes, if the, if the covenant is in violation of pre-existing, uh, city ordinances, then yes, the covenant would be enforceable.
That's all we need.
Uh, Lynn, in, in all your research, was there, was there any kind of standard set, of these setbacks that you came across?
They were all, they were all over the map, based on what they were doing.
But what you, what you said earlier, that is, if somebody develops a, uh, uh, or a subdivision, the setbacks have got to be in for, you don't want, you know, one right up on the front and...
Yeah, for averaging setbacks?
Yeah.
I, I read that in some other case as well, in some other regulations.
If, if we have...
And that'd be part of the, the planning process, I think, when I'd want to come and do this and you look at it and we've already, because we got the information in advance. You know, all those houses on this street are twelve feet from the road, setting these back twenty-five is gonna look odd, you know, so it'd be part of that process.
But, if, all we're talking about here is undeveloped property, and so they would have to come in with a subdivision lot and, and we can, we can establish the setbacks in.
Right.
So I'm okay.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I would take that paragraph out of, of, the...
About supplying the decks.
Developer supplying a covenant.
All right.
I don't think we should encourage writing uni, unit covenants, I don't think that there's too much purpose going forward.
Okay.
If, if, if we're not specifying what the setbacks and everything are, then they come to us with a plan and...
Okay.
If it, if it doesn't make sense, we don't approve it.
Right, and, and we're not gonna develop covenants for these new areas either.
But, I mean, generally speaking, somebody developing a parcel is going to want it to be marketable, so, I don't think we're gonna do anything that we're gonna be, have serious heart for.
Okay, as far as someone coming to us with a brand new one in our DOT four, under fourteen oh one oh three, the sentence says, "The city intends to develop and adopt ordinances or regulations to support the available declaration of reservations pursuant to the Arkansas statutes." And then it'll date based on an ordinance that passes, so it's, based on that date, it was what was available. So our defense would be, we didn't have that when we adopted these, that's something new, we're gonna ignore what you brought to us. Okay.
So have we seen, Dan, have you seen something that specifically says that in the case of a new city or, uh, uh, or a, a parcel becomes part of incorporated area and has covenants that, the covenants went out over the, the city ordinances?
The, there's a Supreme, I haven't seen it, but I've been told that there's a Supreme Court, uh, ruling and it's probably Arkansas State Supreme Court. Maybe not, no, it was a national, it was a national, I read that somewhere in a, in a, when I was doing research, that, um, that it was, it was not in Arkansas. And it was a Supreme Court ruling that, um, unit covenants have value. And if the, if the government does something to, uh, take away, you know, a, a right or, you know, an authorization that was guaranteed these people in their unit covenant, that that constitutes an illegal extraction, an illegal taking of value.
So, but, so that was a US Supreme Court or, or some, well, because if it was just a state Supreme Court ruling, that would not set a precedent in Arkansas.
Right, right.
So I guess what I'm getting at, shouldn't we give a definitive opinion on that?
I can, I can ask Justin.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I think we should because, but we, this comes up just about every meeting, you know. We've all seen something somewhere that, uh...
I got one, one more question on fourteen oh seven. So if somebody came in to, with the, uh, requesting a permit to build a residence in unit one twenty, what, how- how is, how are they gonna establish the setback there?
They're gonna bring a plan, and they're gonna present it to the planning commission. The commission will approve it, or disapprove it. And I would think at that point, when we say, if they came to us and say, this needs to be twenty feet for frontage, we'd probably update the table. So the rest of the development in one twenty would be the same. That'd be my anticipation.
So, you're gonna make, uh...
The building inspector would not be able to issue a building permit because he wouldn't have any zoning standards to go by. So that would have to be referred to the planning commission.
Because it's blank, he has, they have to come to the commission for the approval.
Then you're gonna use that as a standard for that?
Probably.
Update this table with that standard?
I would guess that we would look at neighboring properties and see what the...
Uh, two oh eight, two, two oh eight, two oh nine, is that bluff area? Where the hell is that?
To the park.
It's, they're the commercial areas.
Commercial and the park.
They're near that number three I put on your handout map. They're in that section that I don't have highlighted. The two hundreds are. Two oh one through two seventeen is a string of properties across the road in the commercial area. Two oh one through two seventeen.
Okay, and the bluffs behind that, so what's, what?
The blue part's the bluffs.
That's three oh one and three oh two that's highlighted in that chart. One's blue, one's green.
Oh, okay. Oh, off to the left. Okay, I got that. Well, the green is, is peach tree.
Yeah.
Okay.
I- I wanna make sure that we're okay with what I propose for the minimum street frontage, because that's my invention in these two tables.
I think seventy-five feet is fine.
And I have sixty feet though in R two.
Eighty-foot lots back in the olden days was pretty standard in, uh, in the city, so...
Okay. So in R two is sixty, okay? R two is the, uh...
Yeah.
The duplexes and multiple family. So a little bit narrower lots. Or should it be just as wide, seventy-five feet?
You're putting...
I'd say seventy-five if you got a duplex.
If you're putting a duplex on one lot, then you want a light, a lighter lot.
Well, not necessarily. Duplexes are, well, I don't wanna say typical, but my experience has been they've been smaller homes.
Well, they're usually four rooms.
Yeah, so they're smaller homes anyhow.
I know, but if you got two of them, you got an eight-room house.
Yeah, which is twenty-four hundred square feet or less, two thousand square feet. I don't know, I just...
And they're usually on one level, so, like, I don't know.
I don't know.
I could, we could make them seventy-five. And then what about R threes? We've got a string of lots dividing up a full unit town home. I put that at twenty feet for a lot with minimum. It can be bigger, but I put minimum.
I don't see where, there's nothing in it.
And again, sixty feet is minimum for a duplex lot.
I thought we just changed it to seventy-five.
We can. We will. I just put it on there because it's minimums.
I mean, if you got four units, I mean, you got to have substantial parking. I mean, you're gonna put...
Right now...
I don't think you can set it because you, there's, you know, R three is anything more than two, right?
R three is intended for the, the townhomes. You got attached residences side by side.
I don't think you can set a minimum.
How wide?
I don't think you can set a minimum.
Lots are, my whole point.
I don't think you can set a minimum.
They're not very wide. Twenty feet be a minimum. That's as tight as we want it. If they wanted to be forty feet or a hundred feet, they could be whatever they want, but... I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong column. It's fifty feet. I put fifty in there. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say twenty feet.
It's the...
What's the time there?
It's called...
I don't think you can set it up.
It's only three, three sheets apply way wide.
I don't think you can.
Here's R one, or, or sixty, sixty. And R three is...
Yeah, I get it.
I said fifty feet. I'm mature. I'm sorry, not twenty feet.
Yeah, that sounds better.
Okay.
What do you mean you want? Does it, you know, depend on what they want?
Okay, so we'll leave that alone. Alright, now let's fill the zoning map then. So what we're talking about, and marked on these maps I passed out, the first property, unit eighteen, in the eastern edge of our city limits. I didn't zone it because I don't know what we're gonna do. As a group, we need to decide what we're gonna do.
Let me, let me add a little something here.
Okay.
Is that one, where you got the one and the two?
Yes, sir.
And I had a question mark that. I didn't know what it was.
Those are bullet ones on our text through bullet eight. My discussion points, one through eight, are the one through eight on the map.
Unit eighteen and nineteen, you said. There's, where is that?
That's.
Can you see the map?
Flanagan's and Pan- Gary Hanson's.
Oh, okay. That's what I thought. I thought that, that, forty acres after.
There are, um... Did you just light this down here?
I did it before the meeting started.
Oh, okay.
So my discussion...
I did almost the exact same thing.
My discussion points, one through eight, are those bullets that I circled.
Yeah. Uh, let me see if...
Bottom right hand corner is one.
There's a couple. There's a couple more.
Okay. Um, where's that hundred and sixty acres? Well, that's four.
There's, there's a, uh, uh, over by, um, no, it's, uh, it's where it's, um, where Royster's, just on, on the Holiday Island side of where Royster's live, out by Woodsdale. Yeah, Pleasant Ridge Road. There's a property there that's forty-six acres.
On Pleasant Ridge? It's not ours?
No, it's a road. It's inside the city yards.
Yeah. When you're coming down Pleasant Ridge Drive down towards Woodsdale, there's a, like, a duplex or something that's along the road. There's just one house along there.
Oh, I...
All that, all that land around that duplex is a one parcel.
Yeah, I, I marked that parcel residential. That's this parcel, right?
Yeah, yeah.
On this map I gave you. It's this, right here.
Yeah.
I marked it as residential, because it was surrounded by residential.
Okay.
Yeah. Well...
These others are ones I don't know what they're surrounded by.
That one, you know, that one's forty-six acres. There's the, the, the big parcel C that Flanagan owns is four hundred and seventeen acres.
Is that number four on the map?
That's number four on your map.
Okay.
Number three on your map is actually divided up into one, two, three, four different, um, parcels.
Okay.
One of them is thirty-four acres, one's ten acres, one's twenty acres, and the fourth one that runs, uh, it's right behind Wolf Wellness, runs along twenty-three.
Uh-huh.
Um, doesn't show up in Data Scout, so who knows what it is.
There's another one going up Pleasant Ridge, two.
Then Gary Hanson's property, which is unit nineteen, I think, is forty-eight acres.
I think Flanagan's nineteen, isn't he?
Well, one of them's eighteen, one's nineteen. So, um, Gary Hanson's is forty-eight acres, um, Flanagan's is twelve acres.
Yeah.
Those, those, I kind of picked those out separate, because they're on the outer periphery of, of Holiday Island. They're primarily wooded, uh, most of them, uh, only, only, uh, Flanagan's and Gary Hanson's have any kind of buildings on them. Gary Hanson actually lives on his. He's got a house there. Uh, I don't think, um, Chris Flanagan lives on Holiday Island, right?
He has.
So I think he's got a barn and some animals and stuff on his property.
I thought he sold that, yeah, so.
There's a big...
The one that has the garden next to it?
Um, maybe. Could be. I don't know. But at any rate, all of those properties, to me, seemed like they may need another classification. So I came up with this, a zone that I call rural wooded. And the definition would be a parcel with a minimum acreage of ten acres that is primarily undeveloped woodlands. And the primary usage would be timber, hunting, single-family residence, or hobby farming. No commercial uses allowed. Multiple housing units on, on the parcel would be prohibited, and a well and septic would be allowed. And, um...
Is, is that what's on Hanson's property? He's not connected to... I said water.
I think he might have water, but not sure.
Not sure.
I think that his brother water is, uh, into his property, but I, I'm not a hundred percent.
I don't think so. I think he's got a well.
Could be. I don't know.
Uh, I don't know. We went through, there's another hundred and sixty acres in there that we had, uh, all kinds of disputes over property lines on the, on kind of a... Uh, but there is another, be, uh, uh, as you go up Pleasant Ridge and you make that sharp left, you know, where that house sits up, uh, plumber built there, there's, there's a parcel back in there, because I've got twenty-five acres there. I was gonna buy it one time. Uh, it's behind Woodview, or, I'm trying to pick it out here. Uh, where, where's the fire station at?
The fire station is, if you look at that little green box, I believe that's the barn. The fire station is probably to the east of that. I'm thinking, I, I did not dig in Data Scout to see what that green box represents. I marked that as Hyacinth Commercial, assumed it was the barn.
You don't, directly south of the fire station? That's not in Holiday Island.
No, you know, you know where that, you go up there, you know, where they got the garden rail there, so, you know.
He's talking about not long ago.
Yeah. If you, if, there used to be, there was a, it was a dirt road that went back right there at the turn, and it went back, and there's acreage in there. Because I was gonna buy it one time.
Oh, the, the main part is here.
It's not, it's not the one, it's not connected to the one behind, right behind the fire station, but there's another plot in there.
Are you talking about where Roxanne lives?
Oh, that, that's, on, on Data Scout, that's Hyacinth Property. I know what you're talking about. It's this square right here.
Where? I don't see which.
Below the nine that I wrote in?
Yeah.
I don't see what square you're on.
That's behind, that looks like.
I marked it residential because it was a collecting residential.
The number nine below the hundred.
I had a nine in there. What Dan was pointing to is, is that?
I think it's right here.
This rectangle right here is what Dan was pointing.
Yeah.
Right here?
Um, in Data Scout, that belongs to Hyacinth.
Really? Well, it belonged to an individual, and I was gonna buy it one time.
Uh, it's either green space or, or in, was in foreclosure.
So it may have been foreclosed on, went back to the district because they couldn't sell it. I mean, there, there's not a flat plate in it.
Yeah.
Straight down here.
Okay.
So a lot of this is my one AM, two AM, three AM effort to get it done, so we have something to look at. I acknowledge that most of it, most of it needs to be verified that we've got, that I have it marked right.
Okay, and the, and the light blue is unit one trailer, right?
Yes.
And what's, what, what's those green spaces? Is that the depot? Is that belong to Hyacinth?
Those are R two areas.
Yeah, back in there?
I don't know where you're pointing, Ken.
Huh?
They're giving a reference point. To the left of the, of, of unit one, uh, these, right here. See these two big green spaces?
Yeah, those are R two zones, according to the covenants.
Really?
Yes, sir. Duplexes.
Really?
Just like the green zone along Holiday Island Drive.
Well, all the green down in Hyacinth, you know, is R two's then, huh?
Yeah, up there on that curve it is.
Well, there's a whole...
Well, this would be a whole lot easier to talk about as a group if I had it up on the screen and had a great big screen with a big display. This is a huge map. There's three miles represented on a piece of paper. I wanna talk about those zones that Dan says that we probably need a new, uh, a new zone for. I'm not opposed to doing that.
I'm not opposed to doing the, the wooden.
Question. That, that's a lot of acreage, and, I mean, conceivably, could, down the road, far into the future, would there be, you know, a hotel undeveloped, since this was a, uh, this is a resort town, uh, or some industry wants, looks for acreage, and we've limited, I mean, the, I don't know how many hundred acres there.
By, by zoning it, we're saying it's gonna be RW. If you'd like to have some other use, you have to come to the planning commission of the plan. And we can, and they would be rezoned, or we would give some conditional use permit, or something like that. But we, we need to assign a zone to it because it's inside our city limits.
Well, there, you got, you got that white area, number five is...
That happens to be the, the one church that I didn't mark, because I wanna talk about churches as a group, as a whole, as a, what zone do churches belong in? Are they R ones, like their surrounding neighborhood, or are they C one, like commercials? What are we gonna call church grounds?
How about C two, isn't it? Our definition of C two was, I think churches was, I don't have that to look at, but... Uh, we have, you know, we defined what was in C two as light, commercial.
I'm trying to get through it.
I don't know that there would be, my, to my way of thinking, I don't know that there would be a zone for churches. I think the church would be zoned, whatever, where, whatever resides in, inside of.
I think it's...
As an example, you know, the, the community church is in a residential area. It should be R one.
Well, so, rest of the church is the same way.
In existence, that was up in the park. It was in commercial property. It should, that should be the zone, commercial.
Okay. Well, that's kind of where I was leaning, but I...
Well, C two. Tell me what C two, and I think it fits the definition of C two.
Not quite, I jumped on it.
I was, I was thinking we had allowed, in one of the Rs.
Yes.
Churches.
We do. That's what I thought, too, but the, that's, like Dan said, if it's sitting in the middle of a residential in R one zone, just mark it R one. I'm not opposed to that. I just wanna be sure that's...
Well, all the churches are in residential.
Well, except for, like, the one church is up in the commercial area, in that strip area.
Which one?
It ain't there anymore.
I know, but they were.
And they could be again.
Why is this one unique?
I just left it blank, so it would be a discussion point.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, I did that on purpose.
Okay.
But what, what are those pink areas up there in, uh, I don't know what unit that is, where the, where the green ones are there?
Those are C ones.
C ones?
Mm-hmm.
And they put all that, I know on State Line Drive there, where, uh, where, where the commu- cross from the community church, there, that's a commercial zone.
Mm-hmm.
Is that what that is there?
In the covenants, those are marked C one lots. So what I'd encourage you to do is download the PDF that I emailed to you, open it up and hit the plus, plus, plus until it blows up big enough you can see it.
Yeah. Well, I did download it. I didn't, okay. I didn't realize.
It'll expand on your screen.
Okay.
Ken just has a follow-up on, on that property. I got... Ken, just as a follow-up, on, on that property, I got Data Scout open here. That property was owned by Holiday Island Development Corporation up until two thousand and seven, and now it's out in ISID, so... It could have been dedicated to ISID by Tom, or it could have went into foreclosure, I don't, I don't know. But if it went into foreclosure, the district needs to get that acreage and put it into green space, Mr. Commissioner.
Should we not, should we, on this, on this map, should we not show green space, or?
I haven't done that yet, yes.
I mean, would that, I mean, because...
We have a, we have a zone for that, and I haven't got that done yet.
Oh, okay, okay.
Our definition for R one, the last sentence, the purpose of this district is to accommodate single-family residential uses with one residence per lot supporting religious, recreational, and institutional uses. So it's no problem marking it R one, if they're surrounded that way, so I'll do that for the church areas.
Biggest problem when developers put this in, they, they didn't put any areas where you could build churches, schools, libraries, or anything, I mean,
That's why we're...
All they did is see how many damn lots they lay out.
Did, now, I got, I got to chase some rabbit here with that ISID property. Did we decide on any, uh, on my rural wooded designation, or?
I don't like it.
I thought we were just gonna call it one, two, three, four, that's what they're gonna call it.
Okay, so that's all.
Well, Dan, okay with rural wooded on everything except for the zone three that I have marked on the map.
Oh.
I don't think that's rural wooded, it looks to me like that's all been cleared, it's all been leveled.
Where was that?
In the, the south end of town, south of the park, south of the three hundreds. Maybe it is wooded back there, I don't know how far that line goes.
When you get, when you get behind, uh...
The streets and the...
The, the lots that are on the street.
Okay.
It's, uh, choo!
Okay, alright.
That's why they call it the bluff.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're just gonna call it one, two, three, four.
And the view back there is really pretty fantastic, so...
Dan suggested we call it rural wooded, RW.
Yeah.
One, two, three, and four. Well, I'm gonna make them all the same, they're all gonna be the same zone.
That's what I mean, one, two, three, and four. I call them, we usually call them Dan's woods.
One, two, three, and four be RW.
Okay.
Okay, I don't have any problem with that, and I'll put the text in the document to support that.
Yeah, that's, those are the main ones.
Okay, and we've covered five for churches.
Yeah.
Um, how about number six? What are we with that property? What are we gonna sell them now?
Number six, residential.
Current Tom D's property.
R one.
Okay.
R one, and if somebody wants to buy it and do something different, they, they can make a, make a proposal.
Okay.
Cable Rock Landing is R three.
The seven is, uh...
R three.
We're not talking about Cable Rock Landing.
No, that's, that's number seven.
We're talking about the ranch house.
No, we, I'm talking about number seven, Cable Rock Landing.
Number seven's next on the list, so if, Cable Rock Landing is, as far as I know, there's only one private, real property there, and the rest of it's all rentals. So what do we zone it?
R three.
I thought it was commercial.
Yes.
Yeah, it is commercial.
Okay, so which commercial is it? Well, medium, C two? Okay, because it's C three and the four with the bigger stuff, okay. And then, how about Oak Landing, number eight? I haven't done my Data Scout work to find out, are those townhomes, or are they?
Oak, uh, Oak Point, I mean?
Oak Point, brother.
Oak Point, they're called Oak Point condominiums, but I think they meet the technical definition of townhomes.
So it'll be R three. Okay, and then number nine, where'd I describe that to be?
I don't have a number.
Excuse me, I marked the nine on my map, but where did I do that?
No.
Oh, what am I gonna do with, uh, the golf courses? Nine was my golf courses.
ISID.
I know, do we call them green spaces, or do we call them commercial?
Commercial.
Commercial.
Yeah, they're C, C one there?
They're governed.
Yeah, they're governed, they're, but they're commercial enterprises, C one, right? Because they're neighborhood type commercials, surrounded by homes? And I'm, you know, it's not just the golf courses, the rec center and, and the...
If they were owned by the city, would you call it commis- commercial, or would you call it a park?
If it was owned by the city, it'd be city property.
I mean...
Well, it's not.
It'd be zoned city property.
That's what it should be zoned, because ISID is, I thought we called ISID stuff city property.
We, we have, we have two ISID properties, we have ISID green space and ISID commercial.
I would call it green space.
That's why it's here for discussion.
I don't care.
Um, well, if they sell...
I don't know why, give me some reasons, you know, or whatever.
Because I have to put a color on the map.
Hey, if I should, would, you know, like some people are saying, you know, sell them out to a leasing, lessy.
Don't go there.
It's really commercial.
Or, uh, the argument during the, uh, or the rumor during the incorporation is that, you know, putting sheep and pigs on it.
And tiny homes?
Or tiny homes is more realistic than pigs, I mean, I, I don't...
Answer your phone, Dan.
Let's make it so they have to come to the planning commission to do anything, what should it be?
Um...
What's, what's green space, what's zoning?
The attempt for green space, where these parcels that are out there, under power lines and around the...
Uh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I mean, what, but under, under the C one, C two, R one, are...
Do we have?
C one is neighborhood commercial, so it's small stuff that looks like houses and homes, uh, C two is the small enterprises.
But what, what were, what designation were we gonna give green space?
Yeah, that's what I wanted.
HG, ISID green.
Okay, that's what I do for the...
For the golf courses?
All, all of ISID property.
Okay, including?
Because when we shut the golf courses down.
Including the rec center?
Would that have implications?
With sheep hunting?
In some way, down the road versus naming it ISID commercial? I, I'm just trying to think. We...
I mean, we, we have that discussion a lot.
Why choose one designation versus the other?
Uh... Should we, just somewhere near put that, for purposes of zoning, ISID is considered a government?
I think they do.
That's why we created two separate zones, recognize that they exist, that they own property. We put it in there so that if they decide to change their use, they have to come to the planning commission to get permission, because it's inside the city limits, there's no reason we zone it.
It kind of, I, I, there's something inside of me that just says we need to have one classification for all ISID property, and maybe hi- ISID green space is not the right one, maybe it should just be HP, ISID property.
I don't see the, uh, the sewage plant area up in, in, either.
Well, for, the only, my point was if we're creating differential codes, we have, need a reason to.
It's because it's, uh, quasi-governmental.
I mean, dividing ISID into multiple codes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking we don't want to divide ISID into multiple classifications.
Would there, is, can anyone think of a reason why we need multiple classifications?
I was thinking of the way they're used, that we have the rec center, it's a, it's an enterprise, you know, they, they conduct business out of, money is exchanged. Same thing in the clubhouse, um, you've got the, you know, wherever money is exchanged, it's commercial.
So would we put separate, different restrictions of some sort, would we create separate restrictions ourselves?
By...
Yeah.
By zoning it and defining what it's used for allows us to have some input into its future use.
No, that's residential, blue.
Now, it's a house right there, two or three houses.
Yeah, but then the district lands all right over here.
Ken, I didn't separate any district stuff out yet, I just drew the big areas and get some paint in the picture.
I, I like the idea, you know, uh, H, ISID green and ISID commercial, I mean, because, you know, the, the, you know, the green spaces could turn into something else, and the commercial, or, you know, the, the, you know, the, uh, what, you know, where the sewage plant and, and all that is, and you got, you know, you got...
So you're thinking the green space, if you, if you make a separate classification for green space, at least we could have an opportunity to keep it green?
Right.
That makes sense.
That, you know, really limit development on that.
That would be, that would be a reason to differentiate.
I see that.
But I mean, the other, the, the property, they got, you know, they got lift stations and they got stuff all over the place. Uh, you got the water towers, you know, like, by, by my house, you get that, that round, the area, you know, in, inside a rocky top circle, half of it is, is a residential lot, the other half is the water tower.
Right.
And...
And I need to put that distinction on the map.
Um, and I'd say, was there twenty-six lift stations all over, something like that?
Something like that.
Okay.
Um, and then you got that dep- the depot area up there by the, you know, you got four fives, you got four fire stations, and then there's a big acreage back there, and you call it the depot or something, or it's a junk, junkyard. Back behind Venus.
Oh, up there, yeah.
There's, there's like twenty, twenty, thirty acres back in there.
Yeah, we go, and we have water tower property on the well run, so, those are the, those are the finer details I gotta get on the map.
Well, I don't, but the, those would be, how, you know, commercial.
It's gonna mark it commercial.
There's some area off of Rancho Vista, too, there's an area over off of Rancho Vista that's used for something.
Um, but then, I mean, you have to have, you should show them something so you can, you got a starting point and what you're gonna change it.
And I think our text is strong enough to, to say, this map is a reference, the control is the attached table, right? And that's why we need that lot and parcel list, so we can put the right destinations on this list, so you can go down and you can read it, what is it?
And I can put street addresses on it now.
Okay.
With that in mind.
Okay.
That's a lot.
So the table will be the controlling document, this is a, a reference. So if I miss a lift station or two, putting some burp on it, it's gonna be okay.
I just, I just, I was dumbfounded when I asked, I know Doug Taylor about that barn they built up next to the firing range. She said, well, that's commercial, they put in there whatever they want, huh? That ain't true.
Now, oh, you know, in thinking about the table, man, it being a, you know, based upon the plot maps, all that, and how those lots back up to each other, you know, in certain neighborhoods, you've got this one with frontage on this street, this with frontage on this street, and they back up to each other. And the sewer lines go along the...
Common property line?
The back property lines.
Okay.
And that's considered green space, but they're just, they're basically just easements.
Well, it's an easement. They're just easements, yeah.
So, we'll never, we'll never really be calling that real stuff.
I wouldn't think so, no.
And I don't guess we'd ever be building trails on that area, those type of areas either, right?
That's typically where they put them, is between lots.
Yeah, but Danny, you built trails up there around Bobcat and stuff, did you build trails on people's property lines?
Um, potentially.
Did you ever look in the map, see what you were filming it on?
I mean, we, we didn't survey it, but we tried to stay way back from...
I don't know.
If they were abutting properties, they would be sharing a property line that you might be going over.
Yeah, we, you know, we, we didn't, like I said, we didn't get it surveyed, but we stayed well back of what could have reasonably been expected to be the backside of any lot.
I think, I think we're about ready to put this thing to press, aren't we, Lynn?
Well, you guys gave me a whole bunch to do, creating new whatever, anyway, yeah, this is less work to do than what I had last time we were done. I was panicking when you said you want to get this ready for today.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend a whole lot of time worrying about, um, you know, creating a detailed map of all ISID property. Uh, I think that can be...
The table will have everything.
Table, yeah.
The table, yeah, okay.
I agree, don't, don't, oh, it's taking time.
Because, I mean, there's little scripts and bits and pieces all over the place.
And nobody's gonna be able to, to see it anyway, if, if you're looking on a computer screen hardly, or, unless you blow it up.
No, you can, you can blow it up, you can blow it up.
Blow it up pretty big, but...
Yeah, you, you can fill a whole screen with the letter A on the PDF, the detail goes away, but I can make that more detailed so you can go further. But the, the point I made with this was, you know, illustrating is the color code gonna work, are you gonna be able to, I like this. We can publish this, the, the public will have something to reference, we're required to create a map, it doesn't say how detailed it has to be, so I think it meets the requirement of the standard.
And I think if people really wanted the detail, they'd probably look at the table anyway, to, to look at a specific piece of property and see if it was R one, or R two, or C one, or whatever, don't you?
I mean, I've only got a thirteen inch screen here, and you can see, I mean, you gotta...
Yeah, well, little plots are underneath it, you can actually see those, the lines.
Yeah, I made them transparent so they would show through. And then on this map, that's the unit boundary, when I put the, uh, just the, uh, the zone boundary, the lines are a lot thinner, so, the bigger lines. And I see on your map, you went ahead and put your unit numbers.
Well, I did, just for my own purpose.
Would that be helpful if I put the unit number on this map?
Yeah, would be for me, if it's that.
You know, when I, yeah, it's, unit, because we have it, when I looked at other zoning maps, they just have big areas that are pink and blue and purple and whatever.
Well, units mean a lot out here.
That big, that big blue area behind unit one, that's unit two, right?
The big, the light blue is unit one.
And the darker blue, south of it is two, right?
It gets a little difficult when you get down to the island because of so many units.
Oh, yeah.
Look at this size map, you know, when I start putting numbers on it, they had to draw extension lines.
Yeah.
And this is the twenty twelve version, it's up on the wall that I printed, four pages by four pages. And I can get this map printed this big, I can't, I'm not gonna do it like this, but we can pay for it, it costs like by us. And this is what my wife and I did with, a couple hours with the, on my perimeter stuff back a year ago, you guys, a year ago. And there's, there's parcels that have been subdivided since this is drawn that are listed in the covenant, and there's others that aren't on here at all, because covenants were drafted after this map was done.
Well, since none of the other municipalities even have the map.
Yeah, they're, they're not maintaining them.
Yeah, so we're ahead of the game.
Okay.
But one, one last comment on green space.
Okay.
You know, ISID would probably want to have an opinion on what should be called green space and what shouldn't be called green space. You know, green space is kind of a imaginary thing that we've created in our own minds here, but I don't, I'm not aware of any deed restriction or anything that, when, when that property was deeded to the district or gifted to the district, I'm not aware of any deed restriction that says that it has to be green space and could never be developed or anything.
Well, if you read the unit...
The one that says parks in that table, if you read that, it says, it's a park until you don't want it to be a park, and then it's mine again. That's what the covenant says, for the park unit. So I wonder why D's doesn't own that today.
What's the park unit?
It's up there in the crucial area where the veterans park is.
Oh, better be talking to the...
It says that's a park, it'll always be a park, and when it's not a park, it's mine. You give it back to him, that's my paraphrase of what the covenant says. You give it back to them. That's my paraphrase of what the covenant says. But it's not a park anymore. You cut it up. Part of it's a gun shop.
It was a furniture manufacturer before a gun shop.
Well, you.
Are you, are you specifically talking about the unit for the veterans' park?
Yes, that unit was called a park.
Okay.
And it says it'll stay a park, and when you don't want to be a park anymore, I get it back.
I wonder if you have the most recent copy of the covenant, because it seems to me that he redid the covenant for that, you know, the day he sold the property, so that it.
I, I just wish it would've been a city then, or he'd have bought it.
Which is the problem with covenants, you know, if you, if you own the whole parcel, then, you know, you can rewrite the covenant to be anything you want it to be.
I think that's why it's incumbent for us to get some kind of informed opinion on covenants versus what the city can do.
Okay.
I think if the covenant comes after the fact, I think we're on, we're on strong ground, but if the, if the, I'll have to get an opinion on if the covenant came first. And in fact, I, I asked that very question a long time ago of Justin, and we never got around to discussing it. But I asked him, you know, if the city allows something to happen. There, there's things in the covenant that the, the city by law can't prohibit. So if the city permits something to happen, um, that's in violation of the covenant, is the city in any kind of legal jeopardy? Because they gave somebody permission to violate the covenant. And we never got to the point of discussing that.
Wish we would.
And I gotta talk to Justin now.
Sure.
Okay, so the question was asked, are we close to wrapping this up? I can put the notes in for the things we changed today. At one point, we said, this needs a legal review. Do we need to do that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. So when I get it all drafted and think we got it zipped up and I send you that copy, then you'll forward it to Justin?
Forward it to Justin to look at that, please.
And then I thought I'd probably draft the resolution for the planning commission to adopt it, to recommend it to the city council. I can draft that ordinance. And I would think that we could move forward with that as long as we don't rush it and let the ninety-day thing, you know, once a month for three months, we read it again or whatever we do. Um, and that way, that would allow time for a legal change. We could change the text in between time, but we can get the ball rolled. I don't think we have to have his opinion before we start it.
So.
We could.
The resolution would come at our regular planning.
Well, I was gonna suggest if I get this done, that we might have a call, another special meeting an hour before our city council meeting next week. And pass a resolution to adopt it, recommend to the city council.
Uh, we, are we that far in the months?
Next week?
Yeah, next week, city council.
Okay.
It is next week, right? Yeah?
Okay.
So that would be a plan, that I get it that far then.
Um, and then we pass the ordinance with nine, the three readings and?
Well, pass the first reading, that'd be anticipate the city council would have a first reading on it.
Right.
The attorney could be reviewing it during that ninety-day period.
And so it take, yeah.
Because the, the concern that we had and we expressed the last time, we've got to make sure the public knows we're doing this. And so I, I was gonna ask, should we do more? Can we do some advertising, if you will, on social media? Go read this dang thing. We want your feedback. We expect your feedback. Or just do the regular, we're gonna have a meeting to adopt it. We're, I'm disappointed we don't have the participation.
Well, so far, the only participation we've gotten is negative, so I don't, uh.
Oh.
Not on this.
Huh?
Not on this.
On any, on any thing that I've been, you know, where we've had anybody come to the meeting from.
The, the ones that would be, that should be interested in this are builders. You know, the, the property owners.
Well, they might be interested in what goes up next door to them.
I think we got a suggestion for the audience.
Yeah, so I, I do have a question because we purchased our home in September. We paid a lot of money for it. And now I'm looking at this, and I'm looking at, right below my house is multiple family units. And, um, that's, that's the, the case for that whole section of Table Rock Drive. These homes are expensive. And now I find out that in my backyard could be multiple family units. And we were told, well, there's this green space, but green space isn't that big. You're saying it's basically an easement. And, um, so that's a concern for me, that I didn't think that I was buying a home that was gonna have multiple family units right behind me. So, um, yeah, I think there should be some discussion about it.
I don't know, where, where, where's, where are you? Where are you?
Okay, I'm, uh, I'm lots twelve and thirteen, right here, um, right here. Twelve and thirteen on Table Rock Drive. So I've got this little easement here, which apparently isn't as big. You know, the real estate is like, oh, you've got all this space, but we don't where we are. And so thirty-three and thirty-four, we've actually been looking at those, trying to find out who owns them. Uh, and now I find out that those could be multiple family units right there.
There's a lot of.
Behind me. Yeah, yeah, and, and that, so, so maybe for these people down here, it's not such a big deal because they've got quite a good a green area. But for us right here, yeah, that's a problem.
Are those, those.
Cause I didn't know that when we bought that place.
Are those lots that, that are behind you that you're looking at down there? Do they front on Woodstale?
They're in your green space. They're in your.
But do they front on Woodstale?
Well, that's what all that's, the, the covenants, where those areas are.
Yeah, so this is all multi-family units here, according to, according to this, according to this.
Did you say you're on lots twelve and thirteen on the corner?
Here it is right here.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, she's close to the corner of.
This side, right?
Okay, so this is.
She's on type rock.
And this is, uh, Lakeview, yeah, Lake.
Dogwood, you got these, there are some bad areas in here.
Yeah, but those, uh, townhomes or condos or whatever up there, they're really bad shape.
If it's gonna be multiple family units.
You can't see them, right there?
Yeah, but that really is not that nice. Cause that's not that much land.
What's your lot number?
Uh, twelve thirteen.
It's gonna be straight downhill there. There's not a lot of, you got anything worth it.
And, and you can't see these all of these?
You can't see them?
She's got.
I don't think you're gonna build the whole of the house.
You can't see those anywhere.
Okay, but I'm right, I'm right here, right here.
You can't see those.
So we're in this section that is really close to those units. We walked down there. We've, you know, we walked down there to see how far it was.
It's, it's much.
Um. But, but in that, that's, that's a pretty good drop-off there.
For only.
And I don't think, I don't think there's anything in there that's more than due pledges.
No, you don't think they would be able to build there?
We, we, we have.
Well, we're trying to find the ones that would see if we could buy it, solve that problem.
Well, that would be.
But, um, yeah, but we.
There's, there's a lot of vacant lots in there.
Yeah, they're, they're all vacant right now.
Oh, right there.
I think there's something maybe.
And, and we're not, we're not changing what already was.
Yeah, but see, we weren't told that when we bought the house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think you got a problem. I think you're elevating.
So is this guy buying a building on one or two out there?
Uh, and.
I can't find it.
I don't, I don't stand.
Okay, I know what can happen, right? Cause I've been there.
We, we are in the process of trying to make sure, hey, no, there's, there's some areas back there. I wouldn't go up, you know. I went in there getting signatures for incorporation.
Yeah.
It's scary.
Yep.
I mean, there's some scary damn people in there.
Well, I've had several.
But there is. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get a book, I mean, just one's on here for the.
But as far as, as having input from the community, I think, you know, like the guy two doors up just bought that house. And I'm sure that he doesn't know.
We can't, we, those are, that's the way the government's ever set up for that area. I don't, I guess it's just, due pledges, you're not allowed any. Where are, where, where are two?
Well, and, and you can't tell if that's.
This is under R2, that you could access.
I think it's probably R2.
R2, so that's just.
Or the whole, the zoning map, you could access by, or the whole thing.
Oh, I have a separate map. It doesn't, it just.
All right, here, here we are, right there. It's R2. Green, green, that old, those are all, uh.
R2.
Yeah.
Uh, residential two.
Oh, okay, so on that, you can see a differentiation in color?
Yes.
Okay.
This, this is R3 here in the dark.
Okay, so around Lakeview is R2, so that would be like.
You guys are not the same color.
Okay, that would be.
R2 and R3, R3 is green, R2 is.
They have to come to a building permit and hear us talk about her. You know.
This dogwood is where they got.
One of the problems. Yeah, well, I mean, you got the instance of where we referenced it earlier, this house up here where they excavated all down and, you know, if somebody tried to do that, they'd have to come to get built.
Well, at least I know, at least I know. Nobody would have helped.
And Sharon, we've, I've, I've zoned those the way the covenants are. It isn't something that would be different than what they were already zoned.
I don't know.
I'm, I'm saying that's what I did.
Because, you know, when you buy a house, you are kinda relying on the real estate telling you, and, oh, there's all this green space, well. Yeah, and most of that area there is, but not of our house.
Right, yeah.
We don't have that much, or we are, so, um, so we, we didn't know that, but, okay.
I think there's, I think you, pretty good, cause I think there's quite a bit of down in there, there's, it's not gonna be a problem, but.
Yeah, well, we've walked down there. It's not that bad, so.
Um, I, my first, I, I think.
Thank you for listening.
I think a lot of the, I don't think you're gonna see many multi-units built anymore. I don't think anybody's building a, like.
But I'm hoping the economy's gonna better.
Yeah. We, I mean, tomorrow, we're gonna work on the San Antonio.
I can tell you who owns those lots. I'm, uh, Nikki, who, uh.
You probably can buy them for five hundred dollars.
Karen and Todd Rogers own one of them.
Thirty-two and thirty-three.
Somebody named.
I'm actually looking at, yeah, thirty-three and thirty-four.
Ythron LLC.
Thirty-three.
One's three or more of them.
Yeah, thirty-two and thirty-three are the ones that I'm concerned about.
Um. That's what, I paid twenty-six thousand dollars for making, make sure not, just so I don't have anybody.
So you're, you're a man, man. Y, E, R, W, L, N, LLC.
I got this along, I told the guy who bought it.
Karen, Todd.
I said, well, if you decide not to buy their, build their, let me know. And God, the next month.
Sharon, did you know how to find data on the Carroll County website?
I'm sorry, say.
Do you wanna find those, the information on the Carroll County website?
And I.
Carroll County on Arkansas, that's just.
There are not two lots right there.
Yeah.
And then he's behind me.
And then you'll find a button on it for real estate property, or it's in the bottom of the screen. And then a screen will come up where you can put it, put in like your last name. And then you'll have a icon next to the listing, I'll call it map. And you pop that open, then make the selection bigger and more street, and you'll see the lot number below.
Okay.
And it'll give you an idea of how to find those lots in the database. We have some, we're paying for a service, so we can click it and the records are backed up.
Yeah.
An individual, they have to Google it.
Yeah, okay.
That's how you find them.
All right, thank you very much.
Get mailing address, whole name, address.
Oh, great, awesome, okay, great. We'll do that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the, yeah, the lot right on the end of the cul-de-sac, those people bought it in two thousand six for six thousand dollars.
For how much?
Six thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, I know.
See, well, the one right next to it.
He said Jack's working on it.
The one right next to it is.
I mean, it should be, it's not rocket science because they've been doing it for all the other cities up for years.
It's, uh, the one right next to it, those were picked up by this, this Ythron LLC.
Yeah.
Picked them up from the state commissioner lands. There's, they have a limited warranty deed on the property from four to twenty-twenty-one. So those, those lots were.
They'll sell them cheap, probably.
Those lots were in foreclosure and they picked them up from the state commissioner lands, so they probably parked with them.
Probably anxious to sell them.
He's asking, wait till the district forecloses on them, like.
They already had them, like.
When they don't pay their assessment.
Which meant we're done.
District foreclosed on them the first time in twenty-fol.
When did that LLC buy them?
Sharon, and down in the table, on the tax assessment on that record, it'll show you what those properties were purchased at.
They won't be foreclosed for you.
What they paid for when they took over.
Okay, okay, thank you.
But they probably picked them up for fifty bucks apiece, so, you know. Offering two thousand dollars, I think you got some lots.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your help.
You're welcome.
Don't get too interested, though.
Yeah, to say you know somebody that might take them off their.
So how, how does that work? If, if, if I pay fifty for that, do I have to pay the taxes to catch up?
That's when it gets muddy. They, uh.
They have to pay the.
They get a limited warranty deed from the state.
They have to pay the back.
And that would, that would imply that they're, if they want a clear title to the lot, they have to pay the back taxes and a fee to the district. But if they can find an unsuspecting person to buy it in the meantime, then they pass that responsibility on to the person that wants the clear title.
Quick claim.
Nobody will pay the taxes on it until somebody ends up with it.
I think you found that, you know, last year, the last sixteen months or something, the six hundred lots have been.
There, there used to be about fifteen hundred lots on the state commissioner lands.
Probably down a hundred or less now.
Yeah, it was hardly getting.
Yeah, I mean, there are people on Facebook from, I don't know, somewhere, that are offering all these lots.
There's a guy named Ricky Phillips that lives in.
Oh, he owns a bunch of them.
Helena or West Carolina, Arkansas, that's got ninety-six lots out here right now.
Well, all, all this.
You know very well, he isn't gonna pay the taxes and assessments.
Uh, all this does is make more pertinent that we get this done. Because the longer these guys run unimpeded by rules and regulations, the worse it gets.
Well, as soon as the foreclosures start flowing into Hyatt, they're gonna have a meeting with the state commissioner lands and the county and come up with a solution to this.
But they generally wait a year before, they foreclose after the taxes, the Hyatt stuff is due. You know, so if it was due in October last year, they won't even start this until twenty-twenty-three.
We got anybody on Zoom?
There, there's a, there's a lookback period on that, too, that the people that owe the back taxes on it have a certain number of years to pay taxes and clear the lot stack again.
We're on.
Commissioner, the agenda, should we?
Chairman? Yeah, I can adjourn the meeting here.
No, we can.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, we get it. We can get back the agenda.
We're, we've done the public comments, we've done the commissioner comments, we need to do scheduling.
Scheduling.
Do we need a special meeting next week before the city council meeting?
Let's go ahead and schedule it, and if we don't need it, we can always cancel it.
An hour before?
Yeah.
Okay, five P M.
Five P M. So what's that date?
An hour before the council meeting?
Yeah.
Fifteenth?
A week from tomorrow will be the fifteenth.
And a regular meeting.
This is the regular meeting.
This is the regular meeting, okay.
So a special meeting, February fifteenth.
Well, you gotta get the March meeting.
Second Tuesday, I thought it was the third Tuesday.
It is the third Tuesday. Our meetings, our meetings.
This is already, this is already the second Tuesday.
This is the second Tuesday. It's the third Tuesday.
Yeah.
So it's the third Tuesday.
This is the second Tuesday already. Yeah, that's why it's next week.
So.
So when's the regular? Six. No, the regular meeting next, in March. No, the regular meeting next, in March. Whatever the second Tuesday is.
March, second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday. March eighth, all for planning. March eighth.
March eighth.
And will we be having it in our regular time of three P M? Or are we gonna have it an early start one day?
I like one, I like one until.
Should we change our rules, we've gone so many months with one P M?
Yes.
So I'll bring a resolution to the table to change our regular meeting date to the first Tuesday, or to one P M.
I thought we, I thought that's what we always do, one P M.
We can start out at three.
Our plan was, our, our rules said three P M.
I mean, we've been all over the map, we've been at twelve and nine.
Yes, we did.
But three P M, you know, it doesn't help anybody that works really, so.
No.
Might as well have it at one P M.
Well, except for those of us that play golf. You don't give a rat's. No, no, because we're not done by one o'clock. You need done by three.
Okay, the reason we're having this special meeting next one is the hope they bring a resolution for it, right? Do we have this all wrapped up?
That is, that is.
That's the reason we're doing it, okay.
Tuesday, Tuesday is our regular time.
Okay. So you'll, we're a team then for that meeting to have.
I'm not making the rules.
Consider the ordinance to adopt it, okay.
Lynn?
Excuse me?
We do have a legitimate conflict there. That's men's league on Tuesday.
Not, not yet.
Not yet, we don't. Well, I know, we're gonna change the resolution, I don't worry about it right now. Okay, I got them to change the rules, they're gonna let me play nine. On the odd days I have to, instead of always have to play eighteen.
Very good.
You vote and you lose.
I make more money playing nine than I do.
I've been on the losing side, I don't want that to go away.
You made money.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned?